The only one I've heard from is David. He's not gonna be here.
You know, my text. So we're missing Andy.
I thought Andy was gonna be here.
Yeah, that's right. Yep.
Hey, it's Shelley. Are you on your way?
At it, girl.
I know, really.
No win. That matter.
We start off with the... We can approve the minutes. Listen to the budget, right?
Okay. There we go.
Good evening, everyone. I say the journalism class from UCA here tonight. Thanks for being here. We always proceed each meeting with a word of prayer and a pledge. Feel free to join us if you'd like.
Lord God, we thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you, Lord, for your gracious and your mercy. We thank you, Lord, for this city and this country. We pray that you bless our decisions tonight and watch over everyone. Christ's name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
And Ms. Isby?
Here.
Okay, you should have received copies of the October 10th, 2017 city council meeting. Any corrections or changes?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's a six to zero. Okay. First up, we have our monthly financial report, beginning September 30th, 2017. Mr. Winningham, you're up, sir.
You can see, we look a little bit better. We've got a positive number there at the bottom on the general fund, net revenue. A few things I will point out to you. Up in the revenue section, the payments and love tax, we won't keep most of that. Most of that'll go back to the county. I'm sure everybody on the council is used to seeing that. Our sales tax for the month was basically flat. It was down less than 1%. Year-to-date, we're still up about 5%. A few other things I'll point out, building permits. We're having a really strong year in permits issued and the construction that's going on in town. And we'll see that on the street fund here in just a minute as well. As you can see there, we're already at 88% collected budget there. Parks also is having a strong year. We've already met the budget number on our expo rentals, which is a good sign because last year we were a little bit down. We had some cancellations and I think maybe a couple of weekends where some folks didn't show, but everything's looking good there. Expenditure-wise, you can see, you go to the bottom of that far right column at 70%. We should be at 75%, so our departments in the general fund, we're down on spending about 5%. So our departments continue to be fairly frugal with what they've been budgeted for this year. That's all I've got on the general funds. Does anybody have any questions or comments there before we move forward? I just have a couple of other small things to point out. On the street fund, I'll point out the engineering fees there. We're, you know, well, the budget's at $5,000 this year. We've already done a little over $17,000. That's... The street department examines, I guess, plans for any commercial building that's going on. So that gives you an indication right there of how much commercial building has been going on this year. Everything else in the street fund is, uh... Has to be expected. We show the... On the fund balance appropriation page, you can see now where we've got that $1 million in, which was the 2016 half-cent sales tax that we're gonna use to finish up those last few bills on the Sixth Street overpass, which we talked about at the last meeting. And sanitation fund continues. Have a strong balance there. They've not got a large amount of capital budget that they've not spent, but I was talking to Joe before the meeting, and he says they're getting wound up on that for this last... We're in the fourth quarter. Fourth quarter.
They don't know what you're talking about. That's something that I talk about with the department heads on spending. The police chief keeps telling me that he's a fourth-quarter guy.
For spending or saving?
Saving.
Okay.
And last page, our major project funds, everything there is still showing very healthy balances. We've not done a lot of spending there so far this year, so everything appears to be in pretty good shape. Don't take any further questions or comments if anybody has any.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials for September 30th, 2017. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Next up, we have Mr. Gordon Wilburn, who's gonna talk to us about an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of wastewater revenue bonds for Conway Corporation. Mr. Carroll, you gonna speak as well?
Okay. I'll do a quick review of the ordinance and let Mr. Carroll explain what this is all about. But this is just a refinancing of a 2015 revolving loan from the Arkansas Natural Resource Commission. And this ordinance, you might know, looks a little different than some of the other bond ordinances. It's because there's this single holder and everything is in the ordinance instead of having a separate trust indenture. And it was just an opportunity to refinance that existing debt. And I'll let Mr. Carroll kind of explain that.
Nice try, Mr. Carroll.
Sir?
Nice try to hide.
Nice try to hide. Well, I don't have a lot. It won't take me long, but Mr. Wilburn pretty much covered it. But, you know, it's really expensive to do rehabilitation replacement work on our wastewater system. And so, a couple of months ago, Stevens Public Finance Group came to our office and said, "Is there anything we can help you with?" And I said, "Well, you can look at our wastewater debt." And so, they began to look at that. And so, Ms. Leanne Burnett, Bill Bethay, and Tracy Moore worked very hard on this transaction that actually reduced... There's no new debt. We're not issuing any new debt. It just basically reduces the interest rate from 3% to 2.5%. And it'll free up some cash flow over the next few years. That'll help us do some very much-needed wastewater improvements on our collection system. So that's really what this is all about. So our board passed a resolution last Tuesday, and we just asked you to consider adopting this ordinance so we can move forward with this transaction. And I've got a number of people back here. If anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
That saving money's good.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance along with the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
I make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven to zero.
I make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance along with the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And the emergency clause? Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Both of those pass seven to zeros. The ordinance number, Mr. Garrett?
Oh seventeen, one fifteen.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Brett. Next up, we have a report of our standing committee, starting with community development. Mr. Hawkins?
Very good. First item is an ordinance accepting and appropriating grant funds and approving the program year 2017 contracts for the community development block grant program. Good evening. Bring us some good news.
Yes, so we got our funding, our 2017 CDBG funding finally. So this is just an ordinance appropriating those funds as well as accepting the contracts. And there's an example in...
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven to zero.
I make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Carol. You've done a great job, by the way. Next item, she and Felicia.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. My fault. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds for the Spencer Street Brownfield Cleanup Project administered by the Planning and Development Department. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and seventeen.
Make a motion, we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Not, Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds for the Conway Tree Board. And we have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and eighteen.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 3840 Tyler Street, the proposed Charleston Place subdivision from A1 to R1. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the... I'm looking for the date. October 16th. And at that time, the commission voted seven to nothing to send this request to city council with a recommendation for approval. We have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and nineteen.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Is there anyone who would like to discuss this from the audience for or against? Okay. I'll take a motion.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 1300 Favre Lane, proposed Cherry Hill subdivision from A1 to R1. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on October 16th. And at that time, the commission voted seven-nothing to send this to city council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and twenty.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 1555 South Salem Road for the proposed Salem Oaks subdivision. This is presently zoned A1. The requested zoning is R1. Glad to see R1 zoning coming in. That means we're building houses, and that's a good thing, as Mr. Patrick pointed out earlier. And that's just a commentary on things. This was looked at at the Planning Commission meeting October 16th of this year, and the commission voted seven-nothing at that time that the request be sent to city council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and twenty.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 185 Lower Ridge Road. The present zoning is A1. The requested zoning is RU1. This was reviewed by the commission, Planning Commission, at October 16th meeting. And at that time, the commission voted seven to nothing to send this request be forwarded to city council with a recommendation of approval. If approved, the portion of property being rezoned will be identified as 183 Lower Ridge Road. And with that, I have an ordinance to read. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and twenty-two.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 1555 South Salem Road for the proposed Salem Oaks subdivision. This is presently zoned A1. The requested zoning is R1. Glad to see R1 zoning coming in. That means we're building houses, and that's a good thing, as Mr. Patrick pointed out earlier. And that's just a commentary on things. This was looked at at the Planning Commission meeting October 16th of this year, and the commission voted seven-nothing at that time that the request be sent to city council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and twenty.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 185 Lower Ridge Road. The present zoning is A1. The requested zoning is RU1. This was reviewed by the commission, Planning Commission, at October 16th meeting. And at that time, the commission voted seven to nothing that this request be forwarded to city council with a recommendation of approval. If approved, the portion of property being rezoned will be identified as 183 Lower Ridge Road. And with that, I have an ordinance to read. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and twenty-two.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 1300 Favre Lane, proposed Cherry Hill subdivision from A1 to R1. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on October 16th. And at that time, the commission voted seven-nothing to send this to city council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance oh seventeen, one hundred and twenty.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?[1674.84]
the enclosure. Any security fencing shall be behind this wall, out of sight. Brick should be similar color as the Boys' and Girls' Club. Number two, two-inch caliber DBH evergreen trees should be planted around the perimeter of the privacy fence on the west, north, and east, as shown on plans that have been submitted. A number three or four listed here, 170-foot tower shall be allowed. And the last one is a graphic wrap in parentheses shall be provided and maintained by the applicant. The specific dot design and text shall be coordinated through the mayor's office. What are we going to wrap on around this thing?
Mr. Bell.
Mayor, who gets the revenue from this cell phone contract?
The cell phone, the revenue actually comes to us, but now...
I mean, does it go to the city or to Conway Corp?
The tower will have a big picture of the mayor on it.
No, it won't.
I thought you wanted this to pass.
Well, it will say Conway Station Park with a graphic of a baseball on it.
Mary had a question about the revenue.
Is this one of the towers that we already got out there? Or that when we tear the water tower, it's going on top of? This will replace water. The water tower will come down, and this will replace that. Take a fraction of the space and look a lot better. What I'm saying is, it's a tower that's already on the water tower out there now. This, yeah, these are the antenna that are on the water tower now that go into this cell tower.
Jack, do we get, does the city get the revenue from?
Yes.
The contract?
There's a flat amount, and then annually increases, I think 5%.
We've got, we've got gentlemen here that if you want to hear the real story.
I wanted it to look like a big baseball, Mr. Hawkins, but I got Felicia told me no.
I think that's a great idea. Your idea, not Felicia's, no. Sorry, Felicia, I know you're watching.
I'm sorry. My name's David Reynolds. I'm with Smith Communications. We'll be the, the folks presenting this. But if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. I think we've been through this. We went through this, the leasing part of this about a month ago, went through the planning committee with no problems, just the conditions which we were well aware of. And we look forward to starting this as soon as possible, pending, pending tonight's vote.
Can you explain the graphic wrap?
I can, and actually, I can show you pictures of it if you want to see it.
Love to.
Our visual label.
Yes.
What we presented at planning, if I may.
Sure.
I believe it's on about the second or third page into these. I have more.
Can share.
I, Felicia.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. They're actually two small baseballs.
Come on, Mark.
Yeah, that looks good.
Those are the steps that's probably over the top 32 or 40. It works out the letters are about.
Would you mind giving the journalism class a copy of that?
We're small.
Thank you, thank you.
That is an icon, iconic. That's what looks like, yes.
Thank you.
And there you can see some of the, at the rear, some examples of existing sites we've done in, oh, a park at Fort Smith at Carol Ann Cross Park, and at Washington Regional, we just finished that one last month in Fayetteville. And so this would be basically a twin to that, to those two.
You from, you from Fayetteville?
Yes, sir.
I was just, I saw, you must be a basketball fan.
Yeah. Got to be a fan all the time.
Just checking. You know, the Arkansas State coach makes jokes about them.
Where you can come, UCCA on Saturday and see a championship team.
I make a motion we approve this conditional use.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this conditional use. Any further discussion? Just kidding.
Are you still looking for around Thanksgiving?
Yes, sir. That's the, that's the goal, is to, we've got our first construction and scheduling kickoff meeting next Monday with Conway Corp. to finalize everything. But the, looks like the removal of the tank will be the week after Thanksgiving.
Mr. Garrett, would you call the vote, please?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins.
Final item on this segment, Mr. Mayor is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow O3, that's restricted office, and an R2A zoning district for property at 823 Donaghy Avenue. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission October 16th of this year. And at that time, the commission voted seven to nothing to pass this on to City Council with a recommendation of approval. With some conditions, those conditions are listed there. There are seven of them. They have to do with hours of operation, signage, architectural compatibility, lighting, parking, screening, buffering, sidewalks, parking, and trees. And with those recommendations, I move that we grant that conditional use permit.
Second. Do we know what's going in here? Does anybody know, Brian? What's going to be located here? Not the fit doctor. The fit doctor?
No.
No.
Thrumberry?
It says Chris Thrumberry on the case.
Oh, crisis.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this conditional use permit. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, we have a consideration to approve a bid for an electric forklift at the recycling facility at Conway Sanitation Department. Mr. Hopper.
Good evening. So, for consideration tonight, we've, we've put out bids for an electric forklift for the material recovery facility. The current unit that we have in place poses a somewhat of a fire hazard for us, and we hope this will help solve that issue. It's also got quite a number of hours on it, and it's ready to move out.
I make a motion we approve this bid.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this bid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Okay. And if any of you haven't been by sanitation lately, they've really got it looking good out there.
Thank you. Take a lot of pride in our facility out there.
Do we have a new trash truck, Mr. Hopper?
Not yet.
We've got one coming.
We, we need to have one coming, yes, sir.
When are we bringing knucklebones up?
We're, we're getting ready to order those. Won't be too far off. We're going to be changing some of our collection methods, so moving away from chippers and moving to knuckleboom collection for yard waste.
I just, I, I saw a truck that, in my neighborhood this morning, that I don't usually see there.
Okay.
And it looked like it did some...
Don't you use trash trucks in your neighborhood?
Sorry?
No. Just saying.
All right. Next up, we have, on their consideration to remove assets from inventory for the Conway Sanitation Department. Mr. Hopper.
Yeah, so we've done our spring cleaning and summer cleaning, and now we're, we're on fall, so hopefully we're, we're almost done there. You guys have recently approved the purchase of a water truck, so our 78 Ford's ready to, ready to roll out the gate.
Finally.
That's not saying much.
I make a motion to remove these assets.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove these assets. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hopper. Next up, we have consideration to approve the bid for temporary 20, temporary 20, temporary holding dog kennels for the Conway Animal Welfare Unit. Ms. Shawna's going to speak to us.
Hi.
Hello, Shawna.
How y'all doing?
Good.
You make me so nervous. How are y'all doing?
Good. Welcome.
Going to bite you like a dog.
What?
No. No, we're not really.
I'm rabies vaccinated, I'm good.
You, you deal with that every day.
Oh, yeah. So, this is a grant that we got that actually started about April of this year. So, there's been a lot of hoop jumping and that sort of thing to try to make this happen. This was originally an ASPCA grant. You probably saw, come across the City Council meeting, a $40,000 grant that we became eligible for because we partner with them to transport animals out of here twice a month to other locations for adoption. And so what they do is they reach out to shelters that they can tell are trying to do the right thing, but for budgetary restraints, some things they just can't make happen. So, they said, we would like to maybe offer you a grant. And I'm thinking, you know, a couple thousand dollars, and I almost fell out of the chair. So, then we kind of hammered out what we should do with grant, what our options were, and things that would be better suited for our needs that we really need to address first. And so I don't know how many of you have ever been to the shelter, but when you walk into the kennel area and you look to the far left, there are temporary kennels stacked outside, much like these. And so when the animals go out in the morning and the interior is disinfected, they're temporary placed in these wire crates. We're constantly repairing these. There's no drainage system out there, per se, that goes into the main septic system. And so we've got some little escape artists and different things like that. And then really, the main thing is, is sanitary issue because they, they can get face-to-face, and when they get face-to-face like that, that's how they transmit yucky stuff, and it's hard to get them well. And so that's one of the first things that we felt like that we probably needed to do. So, what we proposed in, and what we have actually, I'll just go ahead and tell you, all that concrete has been jackhammered out of there for the first part of this grant. There is now a new concrete slab out there with a drain that is now tied into the main septic system. So Mason Company will custom build something that looks similar to this. And so, and it will sit directly on that concrete slab that's out there, and then everything will go, fall into the drain and go somewhere down Joe's way. Wherever he went. So, these kennels are, when I say portable, they'll be delivered in panels, two sides and back, and then a stainless steel gate. This is stainless steel material with some sort of siding, word that I can't say. But the beauty of these are, is that if we ever decide to move, we just pick them up and take them with us. So they're not embedded in the concrete, they simply sit on the concrete. But they're sturdy enough that they won't move. So this will complete this grant once these materials are ordered, custom-built, and then they will be delivered and set up for install. And that'll be $40,000 that we've added to our shelter through the means of a grant.
I make a motion we approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Shawna, thank you for the great job you do. People, people brag on you every day. You're the, you're the dog whisperer, in case you didn't know. Thank you, Shawna. Thanks, Shawna. Next up, we have consideration to approve the renewal of dental benefits from Blue Cross Blue Shield for fiscal year 2018. Ms. Lisa Mayberry-Williams.
The city has had our dental benefits through Blue Cross Blue Shield since 2006. We offer a dual-option dental plan where employees can buy up to a higher, richer plan if they wish to. They submitted a proposal this year with a zero rate increase, which is great news.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Our employees love the dental insurance. It's a good benefit. They're very happy with it. And we would like your approval to renew our contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the 2018 plan year.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal of our dental benefits fund, benefits from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Next up, Ms. Mayberry-Williams is consideration to approve the renewal of life insurance benefits from US Abel for fiscal year 2018.
Okay. In 2014, we received and accepted a two-year rating, rate guarantee from US Abel Life for 2015 and 2016. Our claims have been processed promptly and without issue. Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of claims, but we have had a few, and they've been handled in a very professional and prompt manner. 2016, we accepted a US Abel Life Zero Increase Renewal with a two-year rate guarantee for the 2017 and 2018 plan years. So we request that you approve the renewal of our contract with US Abel to continue to provide life and AD&amp;D benefits to City of Conway employees for the 2018 plan year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal of life insurance benefits from US Abel. I pronounced it right that time. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Ms. Mayberry-Williams, next up is consideration to approve the renewal of voluntary supplemental benefits from Benefit Partners and Flexco for fiscal year 2018.
Okay. The current voluntary supplemental benefits have, provider has informed us there'll be no increases for the 2018 year for Unum Life, American Heritage, United Teachers, Legal Shield, and Fidelity Key Gap. These voluntary benefits include life, accident, cancer, heart, short-term disability, Legal Shield, ID theft, and Key Gap plans. The Vision Service Plan, VSP premiums, will increase by 5.3%. VSP has presented us with a four-year rate guarantee with the new rates. The minimum, or rather, VSP has kept our rate increases to a minimum through the years that we've had them. Our employees are happy with this benefit. Again, this benefit is completely 100% paid for by the employee. This does not cost the city anything for our voluntary benefits. The other voluntary benefits are well-received by the employees. They do a good job of servicing accounts. They provide our flexible spending, dependent care, cafeteria planned at no cost to the city as part of this package. So we request that you approve the renewal of our contract with Benefit Partners, Flexco, to continue to provide voluntary supplemental benefits to the City of Conway employees for the 2018 plan year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal of voluntary supplemental benefits for our employees. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I went and looked at the other gym, and it's not comparable. I don't know people if they work out or just people on the committee, but it's not comparable.
Which, which gym do you go to?
365.
365, okay, thank you.
Not comparable.
How many locations? 365?
Both of them has one.
Both of them have one?
And they're within a few blocks from each other, really.
Oh, really?
Less than a mile, yeah. I got a Sync, so I got a different viewpoint. I mean, I think it's a great gym, top-notch, very professional, and, you know, I mean, I, and I pay for my own membership there when I could go to 365 for free with the city membership, so.
Can I, I'm gonna say another thing.
Sure.
If you're going for losing weight and endurance, yes, but the police and firemen I talk to, they go in for more than that. They go in for the weight strength. And to me, it's not even close. I mean, Smith machine, hammer, hammer strength stuff, they don't have it. That's why I pay my own rate. They don't have it.
Police.
They don't, the boot camp is free at 365. It's not free there, am I right?
You're correct.
It's $299 a year. And I know that's the stuff that city employees use.
Were there police and fire on the committee?
Yes, there were.
We got one back there. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Anthony Salkmoney. I'm the co-owner of 365 Fitness at the 404 South Harkrider. And I'd like, I mean, I'd answer, you know, any questions that y'all have about the facilities and stuff like that, as far as how they ranked them. You know, as far as we're, we are very close. We do offer private parking. You know, as far as the breakdown and stuff, you know, we did the three years for free, and this would be our third year of actually paying for memberships, which would be basically, I think it comes under the $12,000 figure if you break it down per year. So, I feel like we have saved y'all money. It's not like a, you know, like, I know y'all approve, like, much larger things than this, obviously, but, you know, it is essential for our growth. You know, we started out with nothing. We took over a facility that's older. The building, I think, like, the center part, it's like 30 years old, and we've done a lot of renovations. We put every dollar we can back into it. Like, if I was to show y'all pictures from when y'all started that city membership with us, 365, you wouldn't recognize the place. And we have some big things coming up this year. We're gonna redo the flooring, you know, take out the carpet, redo the saunas, which will be another added feature for us. We should put down turf, but we're constantly, like, upgrading the facility. And so, like, the city, and plus the friendships that we've built and stuff like that, gosh, we, we, every day, firefighters and cops and things like that. I mean, we love it. It's something that, you know, we really, really enjoy. You know, we have another, we have a smoothie bar and stuff like that that we have in there as well. So, just things like that. We offer, I guess, you know, some different amenities as well. You know, we have tanning and that kind of stuff. I know that's not necessarily part, but, you know, we have different amenities, daycare, that kind of stuff as well. So, y'all have any questions?
How many total members do we have? Sorry. How many total members do we have that go, that use the membership? Do we have any way to count or to?
I was told approximately 300.
We have a lot, you know, like, of like, city, like sanitation, firefighters and stuff, they're pretty religious, the cops. You know, we see, we see a large number, and we also see quite a few. We see one or two each week come in to sign up, you know, from the large list that we've already had on there. I guess, I don't know if they're new employees or something like that coming in, but.
Maybe we should.
The thing is.
Maybe we should take a little bit more time, because we're only looking at 3% of the people that actually use the gyms based off that, like, the recommendations.
The thing is, of course, a lot of the city employees are gonna come there because it's our gym, you know, we provide that service to them.
We only got insight from 11 people.
I know, but we.
Out of 300.
But we have a committee for a reason, and that's why we formed that committee, was to look at things like this. So, I mean, why have the committee if we're not gonna take their, take their approval of what they, they bring to us?
I didn't know we had a committee.
Yeah, we put it in place.
We put a committee together to look at all of our insurance, dental, our health, and also the gym.
And as, as far as on the, the committee, you know, like, you know, I don't know how, how you rate a facility or something like that, but I've never been spoke to if you want to, like, compare equipment or things like that. Talking about, like, equipment knowledge and what, what we have, I've never, like, actually broke that down to anybody or anything like that. As far as, like, the parking, you know, we just did a seal coat and prepared. I mean, we got a good-looking parking lot, a good-looking facility. I don't really know how the scoring's done, but, you know, I would be more than happy to talk to people about it, because I don't really know how it's done. Like, if you're judging the look of facility compared to, no, we're not, we're not brand-new. We're not a, you know, but we, we renovated as much as possible. I mean, we just.
When our, when our guys come in there, what do you see them doing? Are they, are they using machines? Are they using weights? And I got no dog in this fight.
We have, you know, our aerobics room that's basically, you know, we have a lot of firefighters that participate in, like, our boot camp programs that we're offering for free to y'all. And our whole aerobics room is designed, I mean, really, that's been more off, like, firefighter requests as far as turf and sleds, kettlebells, and like, like more of a CrossFit style rack. I mean, that whole room has more little toys and things like that in there than you could ever imagine unless you were in that room. And it's all designed for, like, circuit-style training, exactly like the firefighters do for their drills, as far as, like, carrying, like, I guess, like a dummy or sled, you know, like that kind of stuff. It's perfect for it. I couldn't imagine, you know, and I know, like I said, some of the firefighters do the classes, and we actually have one of them with us today, Charles, that, you know, he speaks very highly, you know, of our gym. He loves it there. So.
One more thing I want to say. I mean, we, we took bids for a reason. I know last year you were lower than Sync. This year Sync is lower than you on the bid. I mean, last year, we're like, we're gonna take this one because it's the lowest bid, too. And they provide the same service that the other gym provides. So, I mean, we're gonna pay $4,000 more?
Well, actually, the breakdown per, per year is actually lower currently. If you go over the five-year span, our breakdown's below the 12,000. So, we did three years for free. We've done two years. So, we have always factored in trying to save y'all money, so.
And I do appreciate that. I mean, there's no doubt I do. But, I mean, we're looking at this year's bid and.
Well, I know you, I was just bringing up the amount of money that was, you know, that's been our main goal. We want to save, save y'all money. That's why we did it the way we did it. And we utilize all that money as far as goes right back in the facility to, to updates and that kind of stuff to make it better for y'all. So, I don't, I don't know when the last time that you've came in or something like that, but, I mean, it's changed a lot. You, I think you'd really like it.
I think Sync Gym runs here.
Thank you for your time.
What would a single membership cost? Just an individual membership?
Um, our membership, and that's another thing on the actual, like, rating, we offer the family members of the city a $10 rate. We don't charge them any kind of joining fee or anything like that. So, our actual base membership rate is $19.99, and that includes everything as far as what the gym has to offer.
Okay. But if that person right there with the hat on walked in, no, 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 sitting right here, yeah, right there, if he walked in or if they walked in and, and wanted to go to work and, and work out and just, I mean, just get in really good shape, what would that cost?
It's $19.99 a month.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Any further questions, gentlemen? Come on up. Would you please state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name's Warren Martin. I'm the owner of Sync Fitness Movement. Been there about two years. As far as the equipment, we do have the Smith machines. We have hammer strength. We actually have free motion. I put it in there because I'm also a injury prevention specialist, work with athletes. That was my big thing. I was ex-Marines, and I have it in the bid for all the firefighters and police officers to design programs for them to help prevent lower back problems, things like that with the job. There's a few of them that come in the gym right now that work out, but I've always been keen to them because I, I know the type of work they do. Injury is a huge thing. Along with injury, like with my athletes, if you help them with injury, their performance goes up. So, you get stronger, you know, more endurance, all those things as well. But we have 9,000 square feet almost, just under, of equipment, turf area, lifting pads, all the machines. I mean, cardio, we have everything, so. We're not just a weight-loss place. I do it all. My, my main specialty is youth athletes. I'm a bestselling author, fitness author, been in it for 20 years. Decided to take the, the plunge and get huge overhead by opening up my own place, because I could reach out to more people and, and make a bigger impact in the community, so, here in Conway for a while. But do y'all have any questions about the facility or?
Did you say free weights? I'm sorry, because I heard. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have, we have everything. I, I added one, oh, the, the free motion equipment. It's all cable-assisted, and it allows more core activation. So, it's, it's better than the machines that tell you which path to go. So, it's easier on your joints.
And, and, and again, this young person right here wants to go and work out and get in really ultra-good shape, what are you gonna charge that person?
That's 25 a month for a regular membership.
They just walked in, okay. I'm, I'm try, what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to figure out if we just bought memberships for the people that are using it, because I don't know how many people are using it.
Oh, would that be more cost-effective?
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's the reason I was asking that, was to see, because I don't know. You know, if we got.
That's a good question.
Because 70, what, 75% of our employees are probably police and fire? Would that be?
72%.
Would that be right?
72%, pretty close.
But firefighters, aren't they required to work out so much, so much time a week? And I'm not sure.
And I bet there's some police that would probably do that, too.
So, police, are y'all required to work out every week? No. But y'all do have your gym down at the PD also.
Yeah, y'all have weights and equipment. And so, how many firefighters do we have?
107.
107?
107.
300 times 20.
60.
Hmm. 300 times 20, that's not cheaper. That's $600, that's cheaper if you want to do that. $6,000.
We'll have to rebid it, won't we? Yeah, because they, they bid it on a total number.
That's a month.
Mm-hmm.
Month.
Yes.
That's a, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. I mean, the package deal's a whole lot better. I just, I just didn't know if we, if we just use just the firefighter number, just 107?
Okay, well.
We got, we got a heck of a deal, either way.
You got, you got sanitation people go down there as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You got policemen that go in there as well. They go in there when they on duty and work out.
I got no dog in this hunt, so. I don't want to argue.
Ms. Williams, she's still back there? When I was trying to look, and it's already off the, the city's website, what was included in the specifications that we asked for? Because we're hearing about some other add-on things, and I don't know if that was part of the specification or?
No, but.
Like a minimum requirement and then?
One of the minimum requirements is that the facility is open 24/7, seven days a week.
Are both of y'all, both y'all, you meet that? You meet that? Okay.
I guess, do, do all three of these meet all the bid specs?
Yes, ma'am, they do.
So, they all meet with it?
The fitness, okay, the specs, excuse me, I had to dig it out of my file folder. The fitness facility membership must cover all full and part-time City of Conway employees and all City of Conway retirees. Members must have access to the facility 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The facility's parking lot must be able to accommodate parking for fire vehicles up to 34 feet long with an approximate weight of 46,500 pounds. Those are the specifications. Because we're trying to encourage our employees to work out. That they offer family memberships is a, is a plus, but we're really trying to concentrate on our employees.
Yeah, and I was just trying to fairly judge how they've met what we asked them to provide, and while we're getting a lot of add-on things, that's not really part of what the bid was. So, that's what I was trying to sort out.
And I'd like to say something about the committee. They were picked from each department, and everyone in each department knew that those folks were gonna have input into, to everything that we're talking about tonight. So, they, I think they researched and talked to the people within their departments to get their opinion, and that, this was the committee's recommendation. Ma'am, would you want to say something? Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, my name's Brooke Walker, and I'll kind of keep it short and sweet, but I think something that should be kind of taken into consideration is, I actually teach, I'm the head trainer at 365 Fitness, and I instruct several of our boot camp classes. I do have several, not only fire department, but I have actually some spouses that utilize that option as well. Police department, they use that boot camp. I do incorporate functional fitness and training in there. So, anything, I mean, we have sled pushes, sled pulls, we go in the parking lot, flip tires, things like that, that should kind of be taken into consideration. Also, something that I'm kind of like a big believer in is actually, I, in addition to our other trainer that teaches boot camp, Chance Helms, we've been voted top trainers in Faulkner County for the past three years. So, I do think that that's something that maybe you guys should take into consideration, that we're offering this option for them to come in and utilize these trainers that have, we're, we're not voting on it, the Faulkner County is. So, I think maybe that should be taken into consideration, too. In addition to, you know, 365 Fitness, they brought me on several years ago, so I've been part of this for years. So, every year that they offered the City of Conway free membership, I took part in that. So, I've seen the establishment build. I actually compete professionally in bodybuilding as well, so they've kind of helped provide me that service, too. So, we continue to provide for the City of Conway. We progress. We travel all over the United States, looking at, you know, different programs or techniques or different pieces of equipment that we can bring into the facility to make, you know, the City of Conway better. Something that we do also provide free of charge and with these memberships is, we do cater to all of the members, so we give free workout nutrition plans, all of that as a service, too, in addition to free consultation. So, any City of Conway member or faculty member can come up and utilize those services, so they can get a free assessment with our, any of our trainers. And like I said, the, the facility itself is 11,000 square feet, so you have to kind of take that into consideration. Look at how many people that can come in and utilize that facility, whereas you have something that might be a little bit less in terms of square footage, that can kind of put a damper. In addition to our cardio equipment, our free weight, I mean, we have dumbbells that go up, gosh, all the way up into 160, 170-pound dumbbells, and that's, you think that's a substantial amount, and it truly is, but then you think, well, who all utilizes that? You'd actually be fairly surprised just how many people do use that. We have functional strength, strength training. We are actually bringing in free motion equipment ourselves, so you have to kind of look at where we're going to grow and develop as well. So, I hope that you guys just can kind of take that into consideration, too.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just want y'all to know, I do all the same. We reassess our air quality, workout templates throughout the, got PDF files sent, but it.
Thank you.
All.
You want to say something, Ms. Williams? All right, council, it's back to you.
I've already made a motion.
We've had a motion and a second to approve the fitness center as proposed. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a, a question. Because our firefighters seem to be the ones that use this the most, is there a way to poll them and get a vote from them? Because we're not talking about $3,000, doesn't look like to me. That's $4,000. And I'd like, I'd like the people that are using it, I'd like the people that are using it to have some.
Do you remember, do you remember how the firefighters were on the committee?
I know, that's, that's one. I'm, what I'm talking about now is a big, is a big, big, broad survey. And this might not be doable.
Why, why wouldn't it? I mean, everybody's got an email, right?
Not all the firefighters, no, sir.
They got a phone number? I mean.
The week, it could be done.
Is there a way to, there's no way to ask them?
We had two firefighters on the committee, did we not?
Yes, sir, we did.
I mean, they were supposed to go to their people and ask their people their, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a system that we have in place, so.
Yeah, we can always adjust systems.
Yeah. I'm just saying, if, if you get a poll of probably how many firefighters are using Sync versus 365, 365 is free. It's free. I mean, they're, they're supposed to go work out there so much a week for their.
Well, I think they're just gonna ask me if they're gonna work out there, if they, if they.
If they wanted to work out there.
Yeah, it's more than just, do you work out there? Do you enjoy it? Do you like it?
I don't know, I mean.
This is, I mean, the majority of our employees, I think we should give them a.
Even though Sync was the low bid and all that, I mean, you aren't even.
This is not the first time we hadn't taken the low bid.
Yeah.
I know, but last year, I remember we talked about this when we go through 65, because they were the low bid. I mean, we didn't go into all this detail on what they, weights and all that stuff. They were the low bid, so we gave it to them. And this year Sync happened to be the low bid, but now we don't want to give it to Sync for some reason, because.
Never, it's never been said. That's not been said.
We could, we could just all go, go work out from now till the end of December for this group right here and make a decision.
Do we?
This group right here, just go work out from now till the end of December and then make a decision.
I bet I couldn't get none of y'all to go with me.
You couldn't get me to go.
Wait for me.
We've got a committee.
Oh.
Exactly. That, that was the, the point of putting the committee together.
Yeah.
And, and they, they've done their, I feel like they've done their due diligence. I don't have a dog in this fight either. I don't, I don't go to either gym.
I don't have a dog in the fight, and I know the firemen that are over by Conway Regional, I see several of them there in the mornings working out because of proximity.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett, call the vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
We better do some hands. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Four to three.
Four to three.
You didn't ask for the note.
It's three.
You vote, you vote in the case of breaking a situation where there are not enough votes.
I'll vote with, uh, with ayes.
It's done. Sounds good.
Um, you two up on me, huh?
I'm sure you'll get it back.
I'm sure I will too. I bet y'all try.
Next up, we have a consideration to approve medical benefit proposals for fiscal year 2018. Ms. Williams.
Uh, we published a notice in the Arkansas Democrat Gazette and the Log Cabin Democrat asking for proposals. We received one proposal from the, uh, AML Municipal Health Benefit Fund. We did, we also sent out some invitations to some other vendors. No one responded. I, I, excuse me, we did have one respond. Health Advantage, Blue Cross Blue Shield asked for information but did not submit a bid because they said they could not be competitive. I asked them after the bids were opened and there was not a proposal why they did not and they said they could not be competitive. Uh, AML Municipal Health Benefit Fund is, gave us a rate hold. They did not raise our rates for the January 1 enrollment, so our rates will remain the same from Janu, for January 1.
That was a nice surprise to me.
Yes, it was a very nice surprise.